To have a public here, so I need a motion to open the public here for the purpose of discussing real property tax exemption. Motion by Dennis, second by Rob, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're in a public hearing. Ms. Serakis, can I turn this over to you to kind of set the stage as to what we're going to talk about tonight with regards to tax exemption for firefighters and emergency services workers, if I understand it?
Correct. All right, so this property tax exemption under real property tax law 466 is for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. And the only change that we're looking to discuss tonight with that exemption is changing the minimum required of years of service from five years to two years. Right now, the requirement is five years up to 20 years of service, the individual is eligible for a 10% property tax exemption. There were other items on there also that were not, you know, changed in the law. And those items are an unmarried, an unremarried spouse of a volunteer who previously qualified, who died in the line of duty would still be eligible for that exemption for, you know, as long as they remain unremarried. And also, there would be a qualified volunteer who had more than 20 years of services considered a lifetime member, and they would be eligible for that exemption for, for the rest of their life. And then, an unremarried spouse of someone who had that exemption for life would retain that as well, as long as they remained unremarried. So the only thing that we were looking to change right now in the law was the, the minimum number of years from five to two. And the reason that they're, they're looking to do this is to encourage recruitment, get more volunteers in to these programs. And when checking with all three of our towns, Islip, Brookhaven, and Smithtown, they all indicated it is such a small population of individuals that have this exemption, that the shift to other taxpayers would be minimal. And that's the whole thing.
Thank you, appreciate it. Just questions from the board before we open it up to see if there's any public speakers? Mike?
Yeah, Michelle, just so I'm clear, the, the 20-year, is the purpose of that 20-year limit is that if the firefighter was to retire from the service, but he had 20 years of, of duty, he wouldn't lose that exemption because he retired from the service. That's the purpose of that.
More than 20 years, they're considered a, a lifetime.
Whether, whether they're active in the fire department anymore.
And they would retain that exemption.
Right, retain that exemption.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Allison, any public speakers? Is that for, that's for later though, right? Okay, we'll hold that.
So there is a resolution on the agenda later tonight.
That we're gonna vote on this tonight, right?
And then action is to vote on that, yes.
Okay, great. Okay. If there's nothing further, we can hold the session open or we can move to close it. Like, make a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Sabrina, second by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Just for everybody else, we'll start the regular board meeting in about 10 minutes. Thank you.
Hey, Daniel. How we doing at North?
We're doing great. You know, just getting prepared for the holiday season. Super exciting. So to start off, looking back at the Dirty Dozen fundraiser, it was a huge success. We hit every single goal and raised over more than $5,000 total. And then we assembled over 200 full boxes of food and then additionally had a total of estimated $16,000 worth of donated food. So it was really impressive and I'd like to give a special thanks to our seniors at our school, Jake Lightkeb and Nari Lee Sabayos, who ran this thing and did an amazing job through and through. And I'd also like to take a second to highlight our awesome play, Puffs, that was done. There was an opportunity for the day before break for each of our classes to go see the play in the auditorium. And it was great. It's about Harry Potter and really cool. So next, coming up this Saturday, we have FOTL or the Festival of Trees and Lights in the Sagem North Gym. And it's Saturday from 11 to 4. There will be 90-plus vendors selling things and there will be activities for kids. And each club has set up a Christmas tree in the gym and they will decorate as well. And also Santa will be in attendance. So if you're in the community, you should definitely come out on Saturday from 11 to 4. So next, we have our Burke Bucks are being introduced at Sagem North. And this is a reward for students who do well, like participate in class and do well. And they're handed out to students and whatever class, like freshman, sophomore, junior, senior collects the most will win a prize at the end of each quarter. And finally, we have a food donation contest going on where at the end of the break, the winners will get to watch the Polar Express in the auditorium the day before break. So a lot of good things going on at the school. I'm really excited.
Great. I think Mr. Isserini is looking forward to Santa Claus, so, yeah. Hey, any questions from the board for our students? Comments? Great. Yep, thank you. Great job, guys. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, it leads us to approval of minutes from our last meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Jessica, second by Dennis. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Section 3, Visitors. I've got two visitors, right, Allison? Let me call up Mr. Burke. Good evening, Mr. Burke. You've got three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Which I didn't really care about, because I'm from Sagem and my children went here, is that I received a small increase in my social security and now getting $1,000 is costing me $7,000. Now, this has been the same level since 2008. So that's 17 years. The gentleman over here, the guard, said, "Oh, we talked about that at the meeting a couple of weeks ago." Well, obviously, it's being talked about for a very, very long time and obviously, there's nothing being done about it. I don't know if, to me, if something hasn't been acted on in 17 years, it's not just something that gets put to the side. That says to me, that's a plan. How are people like me gonna stay here? I paid taxes in this school district since I came in here, since 1990. Is this gonna, you know, maybe, you know, I don't know. It's a very difficult thing, because I have a lot of emotions about this. And I'm looking at everybody and I know you're doing all very well. And like you said, it's gonna be Christmas soon. And it's not gonna be a very merry Christmas, I can assure you. I don't know how I'll get by. I'm sure I will, because, you know, I have a lot of faith. And that's carried me through very hard times. And now at this age in my life, for the things I've gone through, it just doesn't seem fair to be going through them again. But life is not really cruel nor kind. It just is. And I look at all of you right now, that this is something that I've heard been talked about. The people at the town told me that they've been in contact with you. And apparently, nothing's being done. And I know you're not gonna miss any meals, but I would like someone to tell me, any one of you, why this has not been addressed. People have talked to you about it. The town has been in contact with, about you, with your organization, your school board, but nothing has been done. You know, maybe you could tell me, you know, maybe I could be like Jesus and I could turn a fish into a feast. You know, it's just not right.
You're approaching your three minutes. Thank you.
So, Mr. Burke, now I appreciate you coming out tonight and appreciate the comments. This is actually a topic we're taking up next year. What I'd like to offer you tonight is...
Pardon me for interrupting, but next year...
When I say next year, it's literally this budget season, come January, February. This is on our agenda. But let me just offer up the fact that we can have maybe Mrs. Sarakis give you a call and kind of walk you through that conversation. We've got your contact information and she can take you through what's transpired so far and what the plans are going for.
Well, I do plan on coming back, because I met two other seniors when I was at the town and they're going through the same thing. And you have the ability to change that. Like you're saying, we're going to address this later. Why can't that be something that gets put into motion now that it goes into effect come February or January?
Because I don't think it comes into effect, Michelle, right until next...
So, we were going...
Real quick, this way we can...
Real quick. It has to be, a resolution has to be adopted by March 1st for the next tax year. So, this was discussed, I believe it was, at the end of October. It's gonna be part of the Friday Letter this week, so that we can continue that conversation. And then we would look to have a public hearing and another resolution, if that's what the board wants to do, sometime before March 1st. And then that would be in effect for the next tax year.
Well, I would like to believe that, but after 17 years, I mean, this is something that hasn't, it's... The world was a lot different in 17 years ago. Prices weren't what they were. You know, I have medicine I have to get. I can't go out and work anymore. So basically, you know, maybe somebody has a tip on how to make that little money go a lot further. I know none of you are gonna be missing any money. It's gonna be a very happy holiday. But holidays are tough enough as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. We appreciate the feedback. And rest assured, the board will be addressing it. If you'd like to follow a phone call, we can set it up with Mrs. Sarakis.
Yes, I would.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Now, listen, everybody have a very good evening.
You too. Appreciate you coming out. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Okay. We've got one other speaker. We'll, Ms. Watson?
Hello, everyone. My name is Kristen. I am a mom of four Sagem students at each level of the district. I've been following much of what's been going on the best I can and I do not envy any one of you through these challenges. I will say, I was very disappointed at the last meeting of the demographers report. I was disappointed that did not have any findings or any research efforts looking into redistricting or remodeling the district. So my question is this: If we cannot close buildings or rebalance, what can we expect for the future of Sagem? Two budget seasons ago, when the community voted no, sorry, I get a little nervous. To attack cap years, I knew what was in store. Cuts have been made. You guys have taken the time to eliminate excess expenditures, which the auditor said you did a great job doing. But it's still not enough to maintain all the offerings we are currently providing. I worry for what is coming down the pipe. Before you know it, budget is going to need to be proposed. I understand big changes, cuts need to be made. The Band-Aids are just not enough. I know we pay, on average, much lower taxes than our neighboring districts for school taxes that are community-funded. I understand we can no longer expect to keep everything we currently offer and expect to have everything these other districts have, but refuse to pay. And believe me, I don't say that lightly. I pay over $12,000 in taxes and I'm a single-income household of six. I'm exhausted from trying to explain this to others, but I'm also frustrated. I feel like a sitting duck. What is coming? What are we looking at here? When options are presented to you as a board, I do hope the priority lies in education first. I sit here wondering what can be done now. If the community refuses another pierce, what will need to be done? I just don't want another year to go by wondering what is to be the future here at Sagem. I hope we have options presented soon and answers. It's been a very long couple of years. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your feedback.
Excuse me, can I just ask, what grade, how old are your children?
16, 13, 10, and 6.
Thanks.
Okay, takes us to Section 4, Business Items. Consent Agenda A through D. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Rob, second by Jessica. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Section 5, Teachers. Personnel teachers consent the agenda A through I. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by...
Second.
Second by Rob. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Section 6, Personnel Support Staff Consent Agenda A through G. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Jessica. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Section 7, Personnel Administrator. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Rob, second by Mike. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Just wanted to pause one second on this one, just to let the community know the action that this board just took. Several years ago, when I got on the board, excuse me, we had Dr. Pelletieri and John O'Keefe. John O'Keefe was our deputy superintendent. When John retired, Dr. Pelletieri was faced with filling a void, which was our deputy. And at the time, he recommended Mrs. Trombetta fill that role. It was unanimous at the time. The board felt a perfect choice for that. And also, in the back of some of our minds, we were building a bench for the future, okay? So when Dr. Pelletieri retired, we looked at each other and it was unanimous to say, "Mrs. Trombetta should fill that role as superintendent," okay? So, over the past year and a half, she's done tremendous things. She's got an intimate knowledge of how this district works, the relationships she has throughout the district are unmatched, and her ability to lead us where we need to go. And it was because of those reasons, we actually just extended her contract out to 2030. So we're grateful and happy we did that. And congratulations, Mrs. Trombetta. I know we've got a really interesting couple of years, but no better person at the helm to lead us through it. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much and thank everyone for their support. I know we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but I'm excited to work with the team that I have and with all of you and the community and the staff to get through those challenges. And I know we can do it together. So thank you again very much for all your support and your confidence in me.
Thank you. Okay. Takes us to Section 8, Contracts Consent Agenda A through D. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Sabrina. Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Section 9, Field Trips. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Dennis, second by Sabrina. Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Section 10, Action Items. Can I have a motion, please? This is the approval of the firefighter tax exemption. Motion by Rob, second by Mike. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Section 11, Donations. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm sorry, you have to just go back. There were two items that were separate.
There were two. I need to do those separately? Okay. So let's do a motion for B. Approval of Legal Fees. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Meredith. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Allison. Now it takes us to 11, Donations. Donation from the Merak PTA. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Rob, second by Sabrina. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Section 12, Budget Adjustment. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Meredith. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Section 13, Budget Transfer. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Sabrina. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Section 14, Committee on Special Education Consent Agenda A through B. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Meredith. Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Section 15, Monthly Reports. Do we have any updates from any of the committees?
We have a meeting on the 9th. That's it.
Dennis?
We just had a curriculum council tonight, actually. Pretty much, we worked through some of the new social studies stuff that's gonna be coming in. And it was pretty productive as far as looking through some new software and the curriculum's gonna be written, I guess, within the next year, where they're gonna include a lot of different things. I don't know when it comes out to the public as far as when they send out what it was. But other than that, I mean, that was pretty much, it was a quiet night, but, right, Sabrina? I mean, they really...
Yeah, it was the BOC's Socialized Curriculum K-5 that teachers had created. So now they're gonna take that and, like you said, the curriculum writing, where then they're gonna build it off. There wasn't too much differentiation that was going on in them. So the teachers will kind of pull what they need and create more lessons that, again, all our K-5 teachers can use. And then we think briefly, they just showed us what kind of professional development that the teachers are receiving, what kind of happened on Election Day when you guys had that, that the K-5 teachers had a science person come in and do a lot of, with them, hands-on. And the teachers were able to leave with things for their classroom. So it's very successful.
Yeah, and I think the SC TA sponsored something that day with them, worked with them together to...
Yeah, the science of reading.
Somebody came in for the science, so, yeah.
Great, thanks. Any other updates? I know Stephanie's not here in the Legislative Committee. There's a lot of things I think next meeting we'll talk about there.
Yeah, we just, we have a meeting on the 9th, but so we don't need to say anything until then.
Perfect. Thanks, Meredith.
We're gonna work on the charges you guys gave us.
Okay, great. Okay, leads us to Section 16, Closing Comments. Allison, anybody else? Nope. Okay. Section 17, Old Business. Demographer update. I think we're past that, right? So we don't really have any updates there. Okay. Section 18, Board Discussion Items. We've got three tonight, right? Community Survey, which was a suggestion from a board member last meeting, the political forum, and then paper ballots versus machine ballots. Let's just start with the community survey. I think the community survey was really sort of a follow-on from the demography report, right? We got the results, but now we're at a sort of inflection point, right? Where do we go? I think a lot will come out during budget season, but does anybody want to kind of jump in? Maybe Jess, you want to jump in and sort of frame this?
So I think, just, I have experience utilizing surveys on a large scale, just to get feedback from the stakeholders. I think time and time again, we have parents that come up here and, you know, publicly speak in a forum. It's not easy, that are anxious and frustrated, you know. I don't, I feel that as a parent. I feel that as a board member. You know, I think there are gonna be a lot of hard decisions in light of the demographers report. So I really think, you know, it's worth exploring the best way to get community feedback. For example, you know, there's ways to craft a survey just to get favorability on certain items. The course teaches, you know, school items. How does this community feel we handle safety or bullying? So maybe when we're looking at the cuts we need to make and we see that there's large feedback that safety is a concern in our district, maybe we're not gonna look at how cutting any security staff. Or if we get a lot of feedback from the community that bullying is a problem, then maybe we're not gonna look at removing those programs. So I think, considering that we have to be very thoughtful with the upcoming cuts, I'd like to see where the community feels our strengths and weaknesses are in current state, so we can be able to prioritize resources accordingly. So I think there's a way to carefully craft that. And I think, you know, the stakeholders would be appreciative of a voice in some of the decisions that we make. And obviously, we have to make the hard decisions. You know, we are the ones that make the hard decisions, but I'd like to do that thoughtfully with where we stand current state for Sagem.
Thanks, Jess. Anybody want to add to that or questions?
I'm just gonna second it, you know, like, you know, Ms. Watson came down tonight. I know she's just one person in the community that came here tonight. But if anyone's going to any events lately or anything, it's a lot. People are coming up. A lot of questions and people are concerned. And I know Facebook is not Sagem's, any kind of communication for us, so to speak. So, you know, these people aren't gonna come here until it's time to do something that we don't want to do. And that's when we have 900 people in the room screaming and yelling. So if we can get some feedback now, even, you might get some opinions. And you know what? We might get some good feedback of what things we can do, when we have to look into what we have to cut, if we have to cut anything. And, I mean, it can't hurt. And that's what we're here for, is to be a liaison for the community, you know? So I'd like them to, you know, give us their feedbacks.
I think, like, historically, you know, the loudest people come. And I don't think that's always representative of the whole district. And so, you know, if this is something we decide to do as a board, I would just impress upon the community the importance of participating. So it's not just the loudest voice in the room. It's, you know, the parent at home with special needs child or young children or at a baseball game, you know, game with their family, that they can attend board meetings. And I recognize that that's a large group of, you know, the parents and communities, you know, members that we serve. So, you know, I would just hope if this is something we agree to explore, that there's a large, you know, end size for us to really do something meaningful with that.
Mike?
So, my concern always with surveys is participation rate. You know, if you only get a 27% participation rate, it probably does not accurately reflect the feelings of the community. People just didn't bother responding. So... I don't want to say I'm hesitant to send one out, because I'm trying to figure out that there certainly seems like there would be value in that. I guess you'd have to... I think I'd want to think about it before I said yes or no to it, because I guess, what are we trying to achieve by it? Right? I mean, I'd like to listen, so...
Meredith and then Dennis?
So, it kind of goes back and forth. Like, you start out, so I'm in like that middle phase, okay? So you start out when your kids are young and you're in that elementary phase. And then your kids go through the whole school system. And then once your kids are out of the school system, but not so far removed, that's where I am. I'm at that middle stage. And this gentleman who came to speak tonight, he's at that stage where, you know, taxes can make or break a person. $600 a month is an enormous amount for a senior. It's an enormous amount for a lot of people. So, I want, if we're gonna do a survey, I want it to be representative of not just the people who attend school. I need it to be representative of as much of the community. And I know it's hard, because we can only communicate with the people that we can communicate with. But there was, there was something that went out to, I don't know how they got it, but I think it went out to all the voters and it was a postcard of sorts about anti-charter school. So they obviously needed to reach lots of people and they figured a way out to do it. I obviously don't want it to cost us a ton of money, but I can't have it just represent the people that have children in the school right now, because my experience at Grundy was very different from your experience at Grundy. Your children are in Grundy now. My children were there many moons ago. And so, what I think about this district, or somebody in my stage of life, is gonna be completely different from what you guys think. Kristen is a huge advocate. She's constantly on Facebook. She has children that are in every stage. So she's a great representative to tell us, but she also sees things different from a lot of other people in the district. So, I agree with the survey, but I'm kind of like hesitant, because, like Mike's saying, it may only represent a certain amount of people. And it's, if it doesn't cost us a lot of money, it's a good way to get some feedback. But yes, participation, how, what does that look like? How do we get it?
So, so we're gonna put it on our website, I would assume, where somebody can click a link. You can, you know, we have, I don't know how many people in the community, what, 30,000? And we have 4,000 people that come out and vote. So, so we can only offer the information. We can try to get it out there, ask for the feedback. But, you know, the old saying, you can bring the horse to water, you can't make him drink it. We're gonna ask for that information back from the community. That doesn't mean, if somebody says, "Hey, cut taxes tomorrow," that we're doing it. But there's a lot of people out there that don't want to come here to these meetings, can't come here to these meetings, and they want to give us their feedback. And, you know, we don't want to go on Sagem Moms, correct? Right? So here's a way that the community now can get some information to us. And yeah, we might look at it and say, "No, we're not voting that way. No, we're not gonna do that." But why not ask them their opinions? I mean, they're paying taxes just like we are. So I want to know their opinions. And it's hard. Jessica said it. It's very difficult for people to stand up there and not even be able to have a conversation. They speak for three minutes, they sit down. We don't address it. Two weeks later, we come back to a meeting. Sometimes they feel like they weren't addressed, whether we had these conversations or not. Let them make suggestions. Maybe there's something out there that we don't know. Believe me, there's a lot I don't. So, you know, I want to hear their feedback. This is affecting everybody, from, like you said, elementary school, middle school, high school, people that are out of school, you know? I'd like to hear it. And I think there's more opportunity that somebody might click a link and say, you know, you know, "Hey, I'm just gonna fill this survey out."
Jess?
I don't think, you know, even, I'm looking at the survey as a way of like to see where our opportunities lie. If you look how New York City Public School District System has a large survey to benchmark where they are. And, you know, obviously, you can ask the public, "Oh, what do you want to cut?" Because they don't know the nuances of our budgets and what our collective bargaining agreements outline. And there's definitely a lot of things. But if you look at, you know, how we're doing is school safety. Okay, so now we're looking at where our security staffing is. Or if we're looking at college prep and they're saying that we do a poor job with that, then that's something we wouldn't want. So I'm just looking at it as where the opportunities lie, where our resources are needing to be, you know, need attention to.
Just a question then. So what's, if I'm hearing right, are we looking to put a survey out to ask the community what we're looking to cut? Is this all came out of the demographer report, right?
Yeah, I don't think what we want to cut, where we stand current state with, you know, academics, sports opportunities. If you look at how New York City Public School System do it, they do it based on favorability. And they do school safety, the facilities. And if we see, like, the majority of the public thinks our facilities are falling apart, which isn't the case, thankfully, then maybe we're looking at the capital projects differently. I think if we ask the community where the opportunities lie, that's an area of the school district that we don't want to cut from. So I don't think, you know, again, I'm open to feedback, but I think there needs to be some mechanism for stakeholders to have a voice. Whether, you know, if we're not doing a survey, then we should start having public hearings soon enough. I think the community deserves to have some sort of voice in this decision process.
Anybody else? Comments? Go, Rob.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a problem with surveys. I think gathering information is important. Certainly, hearing the feedback from our community members is important. I'd want to see the draft survey before it goes out. What I wouldn't want it to do is pit one group against another, okay? One division of education against another division of education. You're gonna get a lot of opinions out there. I gotta be honest, you have lived in this district since 1969. 56 of my 57 years have been in this district. And, you know, what I've learned, you know, over the years, that, you know, many times, people are concerned about what affects them. You know, and a lot of times, they're gonna take that angle, "We don't want you to cut this, because I have children in this sector. I don't want you to do this, because I have student athletes and they're planning on scholarship money in the name of that sport." So I'd want to see, I would want to see what the survey looks like. I think it's good to gather information, but I think people also need to understand is that our budget is driven by our state aid. Okay? And, well, you know, last survey, I'll give you a perfect example. We put a survey out, you know, how do people feel about having armed security? Okay? An overwhelming number of people, 80-something percent, wanted armed security. And they realize there's a $2 million price tag to that, which means we'd have to cut something else. So, you know, we live in a society where people want, 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 but we have to figure out what we can afford to provide. You know, obviously, putting education first, you know, for our children. So I would want to see the survey. I would want to see how it's crafted. I'm all about, you know, gathering information from the community and getting their viewpoints. As long as I understand is what, if 80% of the people come back and say, "Well, we want you to consolidate high schools and that's not something we can do," you know, the survey is not bound on, you know, our decision is not bound on what it says in the survey. So, I have no problem with gathering information. I would just want to see it first.
Sabrina?
I agree. I have no problem with the survey, but I think in order for us to ever use it to drive anything, we would need a statistical, good sample space, because we, like you said, we can't base it off 10% of our population. And like Meredith said, you do want a full view of it. I don't just want the people who are in our K-12 schools. We want our senior citizens. We want to have our families who don't have children yet, who are just moving in, you know? And I don't know if we're gonna get that. And I don't want to create a survey and create a false sense of expectations. And then what comes from the survey, you know, if we get data that says one thing and we, as a board, don't want to go with that... and, and we as a board don't want to go with that because we know the nuances of the budget. You know, it could create hysteria. It could create, like Rob said, pinning groups against each other. So there's this like 50 50. I want to hear from our community of what they're thinking and what they would like to see. But at the same time, I don't want to create a false sense. I know I fill out those surveys from the state all the time and then I see what happens. I'm like, see, they don't listen to these surveys. But I also understand as being on the other side of this table, you know, that there are nuances to it that, you know, that the people who are making decisions don't always have the ability just to do whatever they want, that they're, they're tied to certain policies and standards, et cetera. So I agree, I'd want to see what that survey looks like and what the goal of the survey would be before we would put it out. But I also welcome community members, they do have ability to email us. They have the three minutes to come up here, just like our visitors today had. I know all of us open ourselves to conversations whenever I'm at an event, people always grab and they talk to me about X, Y, and Z. And we're more than willing to do that. So I hope the community knows that we're all willing to listen. I was reading something today, it's like, well, I have my views. Come convince me, you know, my views are changeable. I'll listen to people, but come talk to me and you might be able to change my view on things. And I think we're all open to that. Again, I'm just worried about the survey being statistically valid. If one group is only filling it out and you don't have representation from our entire community, you know, then, you know, the data is kind of, it's new at that new point.
Just, just a comment. So again, I, I go back to what is the survey? What's, what, what's, what's the topics? Is it current state of Sachem? Educational? Is it budget? So what is that? So how do we come up with that? What date, what data? Everybody wants data, but what data do you guys actually want? We're going into budget season, which I think this discussion was really on the heels of the demographer study, right? So what data are we asking for?
I think it's difficult to do budget and I think, you know, you have to be thoughtful on how you craft a survey. If you're like, tell me what's wrong with Sachem and it's free texted, it's not going to be meaningful. So I think there's a way to craft it where it is meaningful. For me, I think the budget would be hard to ask the public because they don't know the nuances. But I think if we just saw where we stand with basic, what we were supposed to do as a school district, we're supposed to educate kids, we're supposed to give them opportunities, we're supposed to keep them safe. Or, you know, I think if we see where we stand in those topics, then we know where our resources need to be allocated and where the ones that are going to be looking at where those resources go. And if there's an overwhelming data, if the data shows that, you know, we're not doing this right, or we're doing this really well, then we know where to allocate resources. But I think the budget, is there so many nuances? I think that's impossible. And I think as far as redistricting and closing, I also think that's challenging. But I think if we know what we're doing right now, because we're going to have to make cuts and if we know what we're doing well now and what we need to work on, it'll help guide the decisions on what we cut or don't cut. You know, obviously we'd have to work on how to make the survey work as far as, you know, the data we're looking for.
We can work on drafting something and sending it out to you because what you're saying, Jess, um, I hear and I totally understand. But again, when we, what you're, the three things you just talked about wouldn't apply to our seniors that have already gone through the system.
Yes, that's where I don't know how to engage them.
We incorporate their priorities at the same time as well. So we'll take a look and we'll draft something and get it out to all of you. So that way you have input as well and suggestions. We welcome, please note that we want to have your suggestions back to us because the four of us might not be thinking from a different perspective and a different lens.
Can you recall the last time we've ever done like assist, like a district wide survey other than, it was just the, this armed guards was last time?
The armed guards. I know we've done surveys within the district and what tends to happen is you only get the ones that are more on the negative side and the louder people, the other people don't take the time to fill it out.
We've done exit surveys after elections and after budget votes. And we, we get pages and pages of information, but some of it you can't even use. It's just, it's just, you know, people just venting, you know?
But if we don't have a free text option, then we wouldn't, that's data that we wouldn't collect. So it's, I'm saying, there's a way, you know, how, how do we, how do we stand in academics? One through 10, and you do it on a favorability report, then you're able to sort of see what we're doing right and what needs more attention when we are making cuts. I don't know.
Yeah.
Sabrina, did you have?
Yeah, um, what was I just gonna say? And Patty, and I don't know if Allison, if you could maybe put out to like different districts and see if they've ever done some type of survey like this to get input.
Absolutely. We can put it on our listserv. Yep.
Yeah. And I know we, like we were just saying, like utilizing Parents Square is a great way to get those surveys out there.
So it seems like we have a majority to at least have administration craft the survey and get back to the board, right?
Another thing to look at moving forward, it would be too late for this year's budget cycle, but at the, um, budget hearing, that when the people come to vote, to give an opportunity for a paper survey for some of our seniors that aren't getting the information out as well.
Great idea. Okay. Okay. So we're good on that topic? Okay. Political forum. I think this was, um, to discuss having the political forum as we've done in the past where we had a smaller group instead of the sort of, um, roundtable, it's more of a roundtable versus the dais approach, right? So, um, I'll open it up to the board. Who, who wants to kick this one off? I think the conversation is, are we having it or not having it, right? So about a year, I think it was last year, they, they just initiated it. Instead of having all the elected officials come up on the dais and we'd have a moderator ask questions, uh, I think it was the feeling of the board that it was be more effective if we just invited the elected officials here with a select group from administration, a few board members, I believe some of our SCTA and our bargaining units attended. And it was more of an intimate roundtable discussion on the issues that are affecting us and what they can do to help us. So I think that's the discussion now is do we want to do that again, right? If I have this correct? Meredith?
So, um, that's completely correct. That's exactly how it went because in years past, we had, we invited everybody from the governor down and basically our local people.
We got the dog catcher from town to ISO.
Our local people showed up and that was about it. And, you know, and then there were people that came from not even our district that would talk about things that had nothing to do with any of us. So last year we decided to do a roundtable. We invited our local locals and, um, we really started to talk to them about things that, you know, really affected our district as a personal level. And I think that it really resonated with many of them. And like we even have Rebecca Cassay, who's from Port Jeff, but she's also like a little bit of this area and she's new and she had a great bipartisan conversation. It was, I, I have to say, it was one of the best conversations I've ever had with any politician. She really listened. She wants to make a difference. And, um, just when they, when they were here and it wasn't a ask you questions and a got cha kind of answer forum, it was, hey, this is the problems that we are really facing and this is what we as a district really need to work on with you guys. And these are the reasons, not just, you know, pardon my expression, but a bitch fest to them of what's going on, but hey, we need this to be solved in this manner because it causes X, Y, and Z. We had, like, people say what's really going wrong and what it affects. And when, when this happens, it trickles down and then this is the cause and effect of that. And it really made them understand a little bit more instead of just hearing problem, 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 problem. I also think coming to somebody with a problem and a possible solution is always a great way to go. So I think that it got us, um, they started to understand the, the tan problem a little bit more than some of them might not have even heard of it before. And so now it's actually being worked on. So there's actually like something good came out of that. And I think that, you know, we, we're, we're doing it on a very small basis on a one-on-one when you guys go to Doug's office. But I think that, you know, Doug is great, but he's one person. So now we need to, and we don't, and we need to have a bipartisan effort because we're a bipartisan district. We need everybody's input.
Thanks, Meredith. So it sounds like everybody's okay with this. Any other questions, comments, discussion? It was effective. Go ahead, Jess.
Okay, so it's just switching from sort of like this to a more inclusive, like stakeholders only.
Yeah, I think we would keep it stakeholders, right? We can discuss that. What I'd like to propose is we have our student board members possibly attend. I think that'd be a great experience for you guys. Listen in and get your perspective to our electeds. It would be fantastic. So, uh, I think we'd certainly look to have you guys included and, and whatever board members and administration.
Could we include PTA leaders as well? Just so it's all stakeholders?
They were here last time.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Okay, great. Anything else on this one? Okay. Moving right along. All right. Last one on for discussion items is paper ballots versus machines. Okay. Just to set the stage, Suffolk County made a decision to not lend us the machines for our annual vote, the new machines. We had a choice about paper or machines. It sounds like though we did acquire about 10 machines from the county. They, they were gracious and gave them to us. So we have those available. So the question tonight is this upcoming election, do we want to do paper ballots? Which by the way, was very effective, very secure or machines? The election is going to be held in a single location now. We've consolidated that, so it's going to be here.
Right.
So I'll open it up to board discussion. Meredith and then Dennis.
Could we just have Allison run us, you know, give us a little presentation of what the positive and negative of both are?
So, yeah, the machines that we've been using for the past several years are basically becoming more and more outdated. There's been more issues with them. So the county has chosen to retire those machines. Um, and they have moved over to a more streamlined, more digital, like touchscreen voting process. But those machines are brand new. They're still training their folks before they train us and allow us to use those machines. That's why those are not an option this year. But this was kind of surprised and thrown on all of us. So every district is kind of dealing with this dilemma. So our listservs, I know Ms. Trumbette's listserv has been going crazy with schools deciding what, how we're going to proceed with this upcoming budget vote and election. We were able to acquire 10 voting machines, which is what we have had in the past. But with that comes no service to them. So, uh, we will have the machines to use as we always have in the past. However, they are not being maintained. So there will not be a custodian. So if something breaks or anything like that, there's no service for them. I know, you know, our community can attest to it and every budget vote, we typically have about four machines break during, just because of the sheer volume. Depending on the day and the humidity, they don't like the paper. It's, it's always a battle. But the county were, would provide us with three custodians that would essentially roam around the district that day. And whenever there's an issue, I would call them up and say, hey, I need you to head over to Linwood. I need you to head over to Waverly. We're having a scanner problem. We're having, you know, X, Y, and Z issue. Um, and they would be able to rectify that issue, swap out a scanner, swap out a data card, whatever the need would be, um, to get that machine up and running. That service will not be available, um, through the county any longer. So, um, there is a new company that has offered, um, to kind of take that role of the maintenance for the day. But they come with a huge price tag. So typically the Suffolk County, when they were providing the service, they charged us $300 per custodian to be in the district. The new company is charging us $4,500 per machine. Per machine. So, um, we can choose not to have that. And they would then charge us only 2,500 per machine to program the machine just for the ballots to use. So no matter what, our bottom line is 25,000.
Okay. Those machines could not be used if they weren't programmed. So 25,000, no matter what we do.
Correct.
And that's not including the cost of printing the ballot.
Correct.
And if we do a paper ballot.
I run them in the mailroom.
Okay. And you as the person who heads up all of this every year and has seen us do it every which way possible, because during COVID, we did paper ballots.
Right.
And we had, that was our, that was our largest voting year ever, right?
Correct.
And did you have any issues or how, what do you prefer? Like we always look to Patty for her suggestions on things. So now you're the expert on this. What do you prefer?
I would love a machine that would work flawlessly, but you know, it's the same as owning a house. It's lovely, but everything breaks. So I would love to have 10 flawless machines for the community to come in and swipe in and, but when you hear like, you know, on Sachem Moms, all the, the line is so long at Merrimack and the blah, blah, blah. You know, it's typically because there's an issue with the machine. We've had everything from thunderstorms that the power goes out and the machines have a battery backup, but they only last for so long. You know, there's so many things, there's, in my mind, there's a reason that the county's getting rid of the machines. It makes me nervous, but I mean, we've also held a successful election with paper ballots, with a huge voter turnout for the, a revote in 2024. But I mean, if everyone chooses to use the machines, we'll make it work. Of course it'll, we'll make it happen. But, you know, there's issues.
We've actually shared the video of us counting out the paper ballots with other districts so they could see what it would look like.
Right.
If they chose to use paper. And they were impressed with how smoothly it went.
You have a question? Oh, Mike?
So, so Allison, the bottom line is which way is cheaper and how much cheaper is it?
Uh, the paper ballots are by far cheaper by, you know, at least $30,000, 35.
Okay.
Any other questions? Jess?
I think that's significant enough.
I mean, it, it is not ideal and we understand there's concerns either way. When a machine breaks down on these machines, there's like a secret lever door that you can prop open, that you can hand feed the ballots in. Every time we've had to do that while a scanner breaks and while we're waiting to get it fixed, you know, a community member that has to do that is like, why isn't my ballot being counted? And we understand the frustration and the nerves that it causes. The same with paper ballots. People are cautious and nervous about doing it. That's why we count here, we live stream it. Everyone's welcome to come and attend and watch the process. We obviously do our best to maintain, you know, the security of the election and the budget vote. But there's, you know, pros and cons for both.
When do we need to decide which we're doing?
We would need to decide as soon as possible because we need to secure, if we are going to go the machine route, we need to secure, you know, the custodians and the programming of the machines and whatnot.
Dennis and then Rob.
So we could always, uh, go paper this year. And hopefully Patty, I know has meetings constantly with other superintendents. And I know we have a legislative committee that we could also task as far as trying[1625.79] And hopefully Patty, I know, has meetings constantly with other superintendents. And I know we have a legislative committee that we could also task as far as trying to, you know, get to the county after the fact. And in my opinion, I mean, $30,000, we're talking about cuts and not, I mean, it's, it's, I don't know why we don't make a motion right now to do it this year. Say it's paper ballots, be done with it, move on. And so we don't have to see this anymore in paper. And, and we could, you know, we cross this bridge next year again. Hopefully, maybe the county will see that we need to, you know, the other school districts are going to follow and that they need to step up to the plate and help us out. I mean, I don't know why we're even going to talk about it. If we just talk about $30,000, just pass the thing, do paper ballots and be done.
Off the joke.
Yeah, just, Allison, the $30,000 estimate that you just mentioned, is that utilizing all 10 machines?
Yes.
All right, so, so we have one location. We're here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we can get by probably using four machines.
Not if it breaks.
We could, but we would still have to have all of those machines programmed in case we needed it. So if we utilized four machines, but, you know, worst case scenario, one breaks, we need to have another machine programmed to pull that into the run. So we still have to have that cost of programming all 10 machines.
All 10 would have to be programmed, even if we don't use all 10.
Or, I mean, we could choose to program eight, but we still run that risk of if those machines go down, they have to, we have to have a programmed backup.
And then we'd be bringing in the person to try to fix that machine at $4,500 instead of $2,500. That would be the other option.
Plus the cost of ballots.
Plus, of course. Have we, have we calculated, and I know in 2020, when we livestreamed, there was a ton of staff here counting ballots. We calculated the cost of, 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 you know, incoming overtime, okay, in comparison to?
It is, it was cheaper because of the clerical that we used during the day. It was their normal workday. So we did pay overtime for some of them. But again, the cost savings for not having the ballots printed, the machine cost, it still, and our normal poll worker fees. I mean, I normally, for a budget vote, having our 10 locations hire about 50 poll workers that make several hundred dollars a day. So, I mean, it's a huge.
But being as we moved to one location, we wouldn't need as many.
Correct. We wouldn't need as many.
Which is why we went to one location.
We could still utilize our clerical staff to do so.
The only other thing is, we had, we had to at least look at all of the potentials that might happen, right? We potentially might get low state aid again this year. And we may be looking at possible layoffs, tremendous layoffs, tremendous loss in programs, opportunities for kids. And we may have to go out with a Pierce budget. Okay, and when we go out with a Pierce budget, you know, you're going to bring in 6, 8,000 people to vote. Are we going to be able to handle that?
Well, our budget revote that we did in paper ballots was just shy of like 6,000 votes.
That was a revote?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just, I, I just want to look out and look at all the potentials that, that we might be facing. Yeah, so.
Meredith and then Mike.
When we did the paper ballots during COVID, what was our turnout, our voter turnout?
That was huge, yeah, because that got mailed home to everyone. So I would have to look at what our, like, return was, but we mailed out about 55,000 ballots.
And I think that year we had a little over 10,000 voters. It might have even been closer to 11.
I was going to say 12, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we definitely have handled it. And that was where we had to actually sit and physically open every single envelope.
That was a process because we were not permitted to even slice open an envelope until 9:00 PM.
Yep.
So that was a long frustrating process. This is a little bit more manageable because we're literally checking the paper out of a ballot box.
And we would livestream it like we did then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the programming, that has to happen every single year that we use them. It's not like they program once, they have to program every single year.
Correct. Because if we have any propositions, if we have anything else on the ballot, depending on how many trustees are up for election, yeah, it's a new program each year.
Right. And every year we have three trustees and every year it's not the same trustee. So automatically, even if the budget and everything else is the same. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike?
Yeah, I just want to maybe address part of what Rob was getting at too. So let's make it very clear to the community that if we are going to go with paper ballots and not use the machines, this has been thrust upon us by the county. It's not a decision that Sagem made. The decision Sagem made was to go to one, one polling place to save the money in the cost of an election, based on our experiences with doing it before here. And if we go with paper ballots, it's to save the dollars associated with programming the machines, having the ballots printed. It is not a Sagem saying, because you know it's going to happen. It's going to, we're going to be accused of all sorts of stuff. I want to make sure the public understands this is not our idea. So.
Any other questions or comments?
And just to touch on, that was a similar scenario. When we did do our budget revote in 2024, we were required to use paper ballots because the county put a hold on their machines for their primary election in June. So the machines were already programmed for their election, so they were not available to us. That's why we did paper in 2024 as well.
So how do we go about making a decision on this? Do we, we don't need a resolution? It's just more of a leaning from the board?
I believe you can just take a leaning. We don't need.
Want to do a resolution?
We'll do a leaning and then, and then with the concept of.
Trust, okay. Okay.
I would recommend a resolution.
You would?
Yeah.
Okay. So we okay to take a leaning now? Paper or machine? I'll go, Sabrina?
I would prefer a machine, but the cost associated with it, that the county's putting on us, is not something I want to go with. So paper.
Paper. Jess?
Same, paper, based on that.
Yeah, I agree with Sabrina. I would prefer to use a machine, but I understand that, you know, all of the costs associated with it, you know, is unnecessary spending. So I would, I would go, I would agree with paper.
Okay, Dennis?
As well. I'm going paper.
Meredith?
Paper.
And Mike?
Yeah, I couldn't with a clear conscience spend that money. So paper.
Yep, and on paper as well. So it's unanimous. So if we draft a resolution for next meeting, that'd be great. Thank you, Ed. Okay. Okay, we close that one out. Takes us to Section 19, future items for discussion. Do we have anything for a future item for discussion? Mike?
Yeah, just, let's just touch on the budget.
That's, I knew you were going to go there. Yep.
So I know, we haven't had much then over the week, but you did get the new nice ship rates, right? How did that, give me that, give me that good news.
So the nice ship rates for active individual staff members is going up by 8.92%. And the cost for the family coverage is 8.79%. On the retiree side, they were all in the low eights, except for the family coverage with one Medicare primary, that was going up 24 and a quarter percent.
Do you have a dollar figure on that?
Probably not yet, right?
I, I don't have the, the change yet. I mean, I have what the premiums are, but I'll have all of that for next board meeting when we do that first.
So we're going to do the first budget discussion as we asked for. Okay, next meeting.
Right. We're in the process of pulling in all of our, our personnel for the salaries. We, we have to calculate, you know, open enrollment just closed right before Thanksgiving. So we're doing the calculations now on who's moving around within the health insurance, who's making changes. We have to do the opt-out calculations. We have estimates for TRS and ERS. So all of that will be, all of that good news is coming on the 17th.
And the reason, and the reason for that, Michelle, is that the nice ship year is January 1 to Ju, to December 31st, right? That's why this is like mid-year.
Correct.
But we're not going to see these costs this year. We'll, we'll see these costs.
January.
January 1.
January. So it's in the first payroll of December for staff members because we pay a month in advance.
And what do we budget for?
Last year, I believe the budget increase we were looking at was about 10% for the mid-year. Because remember, last year in Ja-
And zero.
It was such a small, it was like a quarter of a percent, but we always budget between 8 and 10% for the mid-year to be safe.
And then the, the family coverage with Medicaid, those, those plans are much, usually much cheaper, right? Those retirees, like a fraction of what, what individual or family for current work would be.
Correct. So for family with one Medicare prime, the premium, the gross premium, well, monthly is $2,200 now, $2,261.
Post to almost 40,000 for a family plan.
All right, any other future discussion items? Okay.
Just.
Good, Sabrina.
Too late. Just so the community knows, Michelle, like you're meeting, and Patty, you guys are meeting with all the departments ready to start. So there's action and discussions happening.
Michelle has met with almost every department at this time, gone through their budget. We actually had a meeting today to take a look at where we're at and where we think we're going to be. Michelle's next step is to go line through line with her team, with James and Ron, to give you more of an actual indication of where we'll be with that budget gap that we were anticipating.
Great. Good, Meredith.
So I know one of our biggest problems in the district is trying to communicate things and then get reciprocation on it. We hold, you know, everybody claims bully, bully, bully. We hold an anti-bullying thing and 10 people show up and nine of them are board members. But I really feel like there, there's a lot of people who, and it's not, it's not an us problem. It's, it's nothing we do wrong. But I think there's a lot of people that don't understand a lot about their tax bill. And then gentleman like this goes to the town, the town says, ah, the school, school, school. And then when you really delve into the weeds, it's not the school and it's just, it's miscommunication, it's missed, it's somebody not explaining things properly. So I feel like we need to host some kind of an evening event, livestreamed something where we really explain because seniors are going to see this increase and they're going to say, I can't afford anything else. And then we're going to go through budget cycle. And me as the person that's always saying no, no, no to piercing the cap, I know that that's inevitable. We have to pierce the cap. And I've always been anti, 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 but I know that we have to do it or we're going to be a school district that doesn't offer much. And when we don't offer much, your house value goes down. And it's not just the house value for the children in district, it's every single house value. So anybody of any age in this district that pays taxes, wants to go sell their house, their house value is going to go down if we're a district that can't offer much and other districts can. So I think we need some type of an explanatory night because, like, I've been on the board for seven years now and I am still somewhat lost. So if I've been in the weeds for seven years and I'm lost, I can't imagine how somebody else must feel. All they do is they get these things in the mail and you see this increase, this enormous increase. You try to talk to the town, the town's like, ah, it's the school. The school's like, ah, it's the town. And then you're just stuck in the middle taxpayer. And it's not fair, but there has to be some way that we can take the helm in explaining these things. And yes, unfortunately, we are looking to make changes or have discussions and it doesn't happen until March because everything happens a year. Everything's, so people don't realize that. Because again, with the state, they want their money now, but changes only can take place in a year from now. And it's the same thing for us as a school district. We have to pay, if they want us to pay something, we have to pay it right now. But if they owe us money, oh, that could take them six years to pay us back. So it's, you know, it's something that you don't really know unless you're in it and you really start, and, and even me, I don't even know. So I think we need some way, and, and budget nights are great where we explain all of that. But we're not, we're explaining like our school district thing and we're not explaining everything to people. And I think that there's a lot of people that are misled and a lot of people that don't understand a lot of what goes on. And you have one group saying, oh, those kids want everything. And then you have another group saying, our kids are getting nothing, we need more. And then everybody's saying, well, yeah, we pay enough in taxes. Well, to be honest, if you look at other districts, we don't pay a lot in taxes as far as other districts go. So it's all, it all has to be really explained, much better than I'm doing right now.
So, Michelle, let me ask you a question. I know, because we talked about the equalization rates and what goes to the towns. Can you incorporate that into your budget presentation? I think you do anyway, right? And maybe we just need to kind of call that out, to Meredith's point, a little bit more, right? Because, you know, I, I go back to the town of Islip, you know, years ago, where the town got hit with a $1,000 increase, most taxpayers, right? It wasn't us, it was the town with the equalization rate. So if we could maybe focus in on that a little bit.
Of course.
Maybe start that process to expose the community more. And then one of the other things, if we can, yeah, just want, let me finish one thought, Dennis, is, can we do something and, you know, we have a dollar, right? Can we do the anatomy of a dollar? What, like, like, what, for every dollar, what percentage goes where, right? Because I think that's important. Because the reality is, what do we, like, 90 something percent of our budget can't be touched, right? So I think we need to.
It's about 94% of our budget.
94% of our budget cannot be touched. It's, it's all sort of fixed obligations, right? We only get 6%. So if we can break out that dollar where each goes and get very granular, to the point, where are the taxpayers' tax money going? Here's where it's going, right? So I think that's very important to show. And it's, it's really, you know, what percentage? Go ahead, Dennis. Yeah, yeah. Sabrina?
Could we also maybe, and instead of doing a night, Meredith, I was just thinking when you said that, is maybe when we get high-volume questions, like we had this gentleman and we had that lady come and they said, why haven't we updated to the, you know, the dollar amount, but they also haven't told them that we did vote for?
Earned income, I think it was, right? Or something pension income.
Right, we didn't, it's not including, so that's saving them a lot of money. So we voted yes there, but we didn't, we haven't, we haven't spoken about the other piece because we have to march to vote on that. Maybe putting out a little video explaining when we're getting multiple questions, that same question and people coming, one this week, one next week, an email here. Maybe a quick video explaining this is why, this is what's happening, this is what we can vote on. A two-minute, two to five-minute video explaining, so when we have people coming, we can just share that video here. This is an explanation as to why. Because a lot of people come and say, you didn't raise the money here, but we also voted not to include that in, in your, your income to tax, which would have, the allocation, which would have hit the pocket 10 times harder. So I think maybe we could put little things like that. So when we get that repetitive question, we could share and say, here, this is the information, instead of having, you know, to explain. And that's, I'm just using that as an example. There's other things that come up.
Put a link right on our budget, right? On the website, you can put a link there where it just could. I, I mean, I, I, I agree 100% because Meredith hit the nail on the head. You go to the town, the town just goes, you know, eh, it's your school. And then, you know, look, 10 other schools voted it to go this way and you didn't. But they didn't include all those 10 other schools voting to also include other money to what your salary is. So, so they, they didn't explain it, obviously. And you're right, it has to be explained to everybody where they should be able to go online and click it and, and see the link and say, hey, why, why is this?
But also just explaining like the tax levy, you know, where we say it's a 2% cap, but why is the, you know, there's so many nuances to it. Maybe a little series of understanding your budget, you know, with a couple, two, five-minute videos that people, I don't want to create more work. But I think that might be more beneficial than a night where people are busy and aren't going to show up.
No, you're right. Because it, like, I was on the board, I live in the town of Islip, I was on the board when I got that $800 increase. And I called the town, the town's like, school district. I'm like, I'm on the board and I don't remember that happening. And everyone called Islip and Islip kept saying it was the school. And in actuality, it wasn't. It's just their easy way out. They're just like, ah, call your school. And then at the time, we had Mr. O'Keefe and he was just getting inundated with phone calls all day long. And so I think that that is, that, that's probably even better than a night. Like, if we could get a little, you know, something on our website, because our website isn't just for parents. Our website is for anybody who lives in this district and pays taxes. So if we have it on like our, you know, homepage of our website and we do a little thing and, you know, little explanation, FAQs, videos, whatever, just because the average person doesn't understand these things and, you know, and I don't expect them to. You know, we, we understand it better than most because we're in it all the time, but I'm going to be the first person to say, I don't really understand it that well.
I think if we took a picture of a, of tax bill and broke it down, I think that would be even easier for people than a video, especially in that case. I think explaining what you asked for, as far as the senior exemption and the allocation, that could be a quick video. But if we took a picture of somebody's tax bill, blocking out, you know, some of the information, and then Michelle could point out and explain percentages and where things are going and post that, that might be as helpful as well.
And, and we could also see if representatives from the towns would be willing to come down as well.
Yeah, just, I, I have jotted down here, discussion on the star income threshold for seniors. We should just have the discussion in an open session. And, and what we should do is we should explain what we've done, okay? Yeah, it's funny, the town sent, you know, somebody down and said, listen, it's your school district. The town, when we didn't change the allocation, okay, that included pensions and IRAs and 403Bs and 401Ks, okay? The town couldn't believe we didn't, that we didn't change it. In fact, they advised us to change it, that would have internally, intentionally hurt senior citizens. And we took a stance that we did not change it, okay? And they couldn't believe we, we didn't do it.
And we were only one of two, right?
They were advocating for us to change it.
We were only one of two districts that didn't do that.
So, so all these other districts that did raise that threshold also changed that, that option where now all of a sudden pensions and, and investment income now counts towards your income. And we didn't do that. But we could have the discussion, the only thing is, and, and not to, to put the, the horse before the cart, but understand that every time we give an exemption, okay, it falls on the backs of, of community members, okay? And I understand, believe me, I'm, I'm going to be a senior soon. My parents are still alive. They're seniors. We have a lot of people, okay, in the district that are struggling, okay, that are not seniors, okay? That we're taking Christmas lists, okay, and helping families, so that children can have a good Christmas, okay? And, and what happens is when we give too many exemptions away, okay, to benefit one, what benefits one group, these people struggle. They're struggling now. All right, and we can't have that burden completely fall on, on, on the rest of the residents for that. So I, I, I want to have the discussion. And if, I, I'm okay with raising the threshold, but then we have to change the other, the other part of that to make equitable to the, the rest of our community. So I, I would say that we, we add that as a future discussion item.
Okay.
That's a discussion.
Got that, Allison? Perfect, thanks. Anything else, Rob? Okay. Anything else, guys? Okay, at this point, I'd like to take a motion to go into exec session to discuss personnel matters as well as contract negotiations. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Jess, second by Mike. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Next meeting is two weeks from.